Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our September 23rd, 2025 Board of Commissioners meeting. Our first order of business would be to stand and pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Bob, agenda review?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
Moved to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we will need to recess for the Economic Development Authority meeting.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second? Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Agenda review. Bob?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to this agenda.
I'll move it.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the agenda review. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we will be having a public hearing on the 2025 Public Housing Agency Annual Plan. The hearing provides an opportunity for citizens to submit comments and recommendations on the proposed plan in a public setting. Nancy is here to give us a brief update on the plan. Good morning, Nancy.
Good morning, Nancy. As you are aware, every year we present an annual plan to HUD, which is a high-level, comprehensive plan that guides the housing agency's policies, programs, and strategies for meeting local housing need. The plan follows strategic planning, community engagement efforts, strengthens ties with community services, and supports fair housing. And under the plan, we do review annually different tools that are used to help us with our efforts on affordable housing, and that has to do with our payment standards, our utility allowances, the administrative plan, and the admissions occupancy plans. It also addresses the waitlist preferences and our formula funding for capital funds, as well as special vouchers for specific populations in our community. The plan identifies and recommends policy changes, so the EDA has acted since the last submission of the plan. In this year, there are no significant changes made to our plan at this time. This plan does continue to include the repositioning of our public housing program, which is near complete, so we're hoping by October 1st to have our first phase of units transferred to the project-based housing choice voucher, and then by the end of the year, we should see the remaining units all transferred, which will really streamline our efforts and provide more opportunities for affordable housing with those funds. While the annual plan has specific emphasis on the housing choice voucher program and the public housing programs, it also addresses a lot of the work we do on the action steps for the Affordable Housing Action Plan. And so this year, the plan definitely does address the administration of our housing choice voucher and our public housing program, but it also notes that we created a housing trust fund, that we are creating and expanding affordable housing, we're preserving housing, we're preventing homelessness, and promoting community education and landlord engagement. In addition, it also addresses how we address victims of domestic abuse, and definitely has a strong piece for building community partnerships. We received a high performer status for our voucher programs, providing safe, decent, and affordable housing for both Blue Earth County and Mankato. And we administer the capital funds and maintain our public housing to meet all inspection criteria and received a 98% rating on that. It also addresses that we assisted 52 families, low-income families obtained homeownership, and we expanded the community land trust in Mankato. We supported funding for low-income housing tax credits, and you can see that with Lewis Lofts and Sinclair Flats in our community, and then Poplar Apartments, the transitional or the supportive housing project that we want to have built, received its funding, and construction should start later this year, the first part of next year. And that will be for 40 units. We received 240 new vouchers, and a lot of that came from the state of Minnesota through the Bridges Program, the Bring It Home Rental Assistance Program, and then some local homeless prevention aid dollars from the Department of Treasury. We supported the preservation of the Walnut Towers, which is now the Alma Apartments, and provides 86 units of subsidized housing in our community. And then we have increased our services to homeless people by 33% over the last five years, and that's with 166 vouchers supporting those who are homeless in our community. We've provided the navigation service and street outreach to people who are homeless, and we continue to collaborate to seek ways to obtain capital funding to build a 24/7 emergency shelter. So this plan was posted for public comment. We did receive opportunity for residents to provide feedback, and following this hearing, the board is asked to approve the resolution approving the annual agency plan.
All right. Thank you, Nancy. A lot of information there, a lot of hard work from your staff. Before we move into the public hearing, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the minutes from September 9th, 2025.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second? Was there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, at this time, we will open up the public comment portion of the hearing. If you would like to make a comment, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Comments from the public are expected to be respectful and civil. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. There's a five-minute limit, and the county minister will be keeping the time and letting them know when you have one minute left. In addition, the board may restrict or limit the time allocated to persons' remarks that are repetitive or not relevant to the matter under consideration by the board. Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on the annual agency plan? Anyone from the public that would like to comment on the annual agency plan? And last time, anyone wishing to comment on the annual agency public plan? Hearing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the county board and ask for direction.
Moved to approve.
Got a second? Did I get a second?
Got a second.
Okay, thank you. Did you have a comment?
No.
Okay. Questions, comments, discussion? Thank you, Nancy. It was a good report. I know you put a lot of hard work into that, and it's nice to hear that you're working with the landlords and trying to bring them into the mix. I think that you've talked about that many times, and I think that's just a nice piece to get them involved, so.
Definitely.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now, we have to discuss the housing choice voucher program payment schedule.
And again, this is one of the tools that we indicated that we review on an annual basis, and the payment standards are set at, sets the maximum subsidies we can provide to families on the program each month. These payment standards are based on fair market rents that are provided by HUD on an annual basis, and fair market rents are set at 40% of the area market rents. And the EDA has the flexibility to establish payment standards at a HUD-approved basic range between 90 and 110% of the fair market rents. Currently, the fair market rents were slightly reduced from other years, which is not uncommon or anything, but because they were slightly reduced, we recommend that the current standards remain the same, and they are in acceptable range. We do have them between 104 and 108% of the fair market rents. And in addition, to ensuring that the payment standards are always within that basic range, we do look at other factors like funding availability. Do we have enough funding to support the vouchers that we have? Currently, the funding that we receive, 100% of the dollars go to serve about 88% of our vouchers, so we're underutilizing the number of vouchers we have already. So increasing the standard would have reduced the number of families we could serve, so that's another reason why we definitely would recommend keeping the standards as they are and trying to maximize those dollars. We also look at the number of families that are rent burdened, who are paying more than 30% of their income towards the rent, even with our assistance. We look at the quality of the units, the availability of units. I know one bedrooms are still a struggle for families to find in our community. It's a strong need for those. And then we look at lease-up time, and right now, the lease-up time is about two to four months. We like to see it within two months, so it's slightly over that range, and again, it has to do with that availability of units. These changes to the payment standard will be effective on December 1st, and with these standards being within 104 to 108% of fair market rent, we're asking you to approve by resolution the payment standards in their current state.
Thank you, Nancy. Any questions from the board? Got a motion to approve?
So moved.
So got.
Got a motion and a second to approve the choice voucher program payment standard schedule? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Nancy, for all your work. Appreciate it. At this time, we would entertain a motion to adjourn our EDA meeting.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now, we will hear from Candace on our public works bond sale, and Christine Hogan. Good morning. How are you all doing this morning?
Great, thank you. Candace Sonic, Finance Director, and today I have with me Christine Hogan, Director at Baker Tilly, to go over the results of yesterday's bond sale.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Board Chair and Commissioners. Thanks, Candace. Yep, Chris Hogan here from Baker Tilly. Served the county as their Municipal Advisor, here to present the results of the sale that Bob has up on a PowerPoint here. And so, yesterday, the county sold their $29,185,000 general obligation capital improvement bonds, Series 2025A. Proceeds of those bonds are going to be used to finance the construction of the new public works facility and pay the cost of issuance on the bonds. The bonds will be paid over 20 years. They are paid from ad valorem tax levies. They have optional redemption on December 1, 2035, which means at that point, you can call the bonds if you want to. So as of early August, we were looking at a market, the market was showing a true interest cost. We refer to that as the tick of 4.31. Last week, we like to update close to the sale where the market is, and our estimate last week was at a 3.80 tick, and the actual results, the winning bid, came in at 3.716. Next slide. So this was the list of the bidders. They bid, there was 15, 15 bidders, which is a phenomenal turnout. 15 bidders that bid on the county's bonds yesterday. As you can see, Huntington Securities had the lowest at the 3.71, but you can see just how so close those bids came in with the highest just 10 basis points higher. So very much favorable results with exceptional turnout. Next slide. This is just a slide that shows the pricing that gets to the true interest cost. You have the couponing and the yields. The coupons are higher than the yields in those first 12 or so maturities. What that does is it produces a premium. In this case, that produced a premium of $2 million. We estimated a premium less than that when we started the process, so what that means is you were able to, we were able to take some of that excess premium and reduce the power amount of the bonds. So we reduced the power amount, you're still financing $30 million for the project, but now you're using premium and bond proceeds, which are kind of one and the same. So part of the bond sale process, a very important part, is to go through a rating process. So we did that. Candace, Josh, Bob, and I had a call with S and P. They provide a list of questions and agenda, so we prepared for that, and it was a really great call. Just always like to say, why do you get your bonds rated? So it provides a measure of the county's financial strength and tells the, provides the ability to repay the debt. Serves as an independent third-party assessment. It supplements the investors' due diligence, and the stronger the rating typically, well, the lower the interest costs. So AA+ is one notch lower than the highest you can get, so it's an exceptional rating. The next slide, again, because this is such an important part of the bond sale price, bond sale and the pricing, I wanted to highlight, take some highlights from the reading report and just kind of go over those. So S and P provides a report that's available to the investors, so when they're looking to invest, they have this report. Some of the credit highlights they indicated, or they wrote in the report, was strong gross county product per capita, historically stable finances with significant increases in revenue in '23 and '24, robust reserves well above the county's formal reserve policy of 35 to 50% of expenditures, proactive financial planning, ongoing economic development initiatives, manageable overall debt burden. They always provide the factors that could lead to an upgrade and a downgrade, so factors leading to an upgrade, again, the highest you can get is just one notch higher, would be if economic indicators improve, specifically personal income levels that are slightly lower than higher-rated peers. Factors that could lead to a downgrade would be prolonged operating deficits leading to deterioration of available reserves. So based on the sale yesterday, I recommend approving the resolution awarding the $28,165,000 general obligation capital improvement plan bonds, Series 2025A, to Huntington Securities based on their low bid of 3.716. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Chris. Candace, have anything to add at this point? Okay. What are the wishes of the board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the bonds? Is there any discussion? Good work on Candace, your staff, and admin. I was going to ask the question, what we'd have to do to get to be the highest grade, but those are some things that are just out of our control with the whole entire county. There's just not much we can do there, but we do also have to be careful, and Bob will explain this to me many, many times, that we can't keep using reserves to keep our levy lows, so we do, but we still have plenty of reserves, and we take a lot of thought when we do that, because that is a hard decision to make. We don't want to raise taxes, but we can't certainly use up all our reserves, so. All right. Any other questions or comments? I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, guys, for all your help.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, we will move on to our County Ditch 89 Final Repair Hearing. Agenda review.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda.
All right. Being no changes, can I get a motion and a second for the agenda?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The purpose of today's hearing is to present the engineer's updated repair report and receive comments from all parties interested in County Ditch 89 proposed hearing. The order of business for this hearing is as follows. Staff will review the jurisdictional documents, and we will hear from the appointed engineer, and then we will open it up and hear from the public. I will ask Craig Ossis and the Blue Earth County Ditch staff to review the jurisdictional documents.
The original hearing approving the repair was held on November 19th, 2024. The hearing notice was mailed, for this hearing was mailed on September 9th, 2025. Notice was posted for this hearing outside the Blue Earth County Historic Courthouse, located at 204 South 5th Street, Mankato, Minnesota. Notice of the public hearing is also published in the Mankato Free Press on September 11th, 2025. The Blue Earth County Ditch 89 watershed is approximately 4,800 acres in size and is located in Pleasant Mountain Township. The removal of trees and repairs was initially approved by the Drainage Authority on November 19th, 2024. After the trees and brush were removed, it became apparent that conditions of the open ditch were worse than originally estimated, resulting in a significant increase in the repair cost. Due to the increase in the cost, staff determined that the updated repair estimate should be brought before the Drainage Authority for review and approval. At today's meeting, we are requesting the Drainage Authority approve the finances in order and order the repairs with the updated cost estimate.
All right, thank you, Craig. Those are the jurisdictional documents. You have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second for the documents. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I will now hear from the ISG staff, so please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Chuck Brandl with ISG.
And Josh James with ISG.
All right, good morning. So like Mr. Austinson said, we had approved, oh yeah, it's not showing yet. I'll wait. It's got my other screen up. There we go. See if that'll work. Well, it looks like we're just going to do it this way. There we go. Hopefully, people can read this. I'll zoom in a little bit. Yeah, we're here for an updated amended repair report. When we did take the trees out, there was a lot of damage that couldn't be seen, and we did some additional survey and just thought with the increase in cost, we should go through the repair report again, because there are some major changes to it, so. I'll let Josh go through where we're at and remind everybody on the existing conditions.
I'll go through some of the existing conditions. I won't go as in-depth as we did have a hearing on this last November, but CD 89, it's within Pleasant Mountain and Shelby Townships of Blue Earth County. The total drainage area of the watershed is around 16,000 acres. That includes upstream ditch systems. There are five of them spanning down through Blue Earth County into both Fairbowl and Martin County that CD 89 is an outlet for. The actual Blue Earth County Ditch 89 watershed is around 963 acres. That's important just because not 100% of the costs will be borne upon the CD 89 landowners. There are some outlet fees that are assessed to those five other systems that drain into CD 89.
That's what I was going to say.
Perfect. So looking back a little bit, CD 89 was established in 1963. There have been no repairs or improvements aside from the box culvert that was improved in 2021 along the main line open ditch, and then the trees that were removed last winter as a part of this project. Here is a map showing the total 16,000 acres that drained through CD 89, like I said, spanning down into both Fairbowl and Martin County. This is the actual CD 89 watershed. The red line is the watershed boundary. Black line shows subsurface tile with the blue being public open ditch. There is a short stretch of private ditch in this watershed as well, and that is the pink line on the west end of the watershed. Here's an elevation map, just kind of showing that the overland flow within the watershed kind of goes from the southeast up to the northwest. As we stated before, the trees were removed last winter. We went out once those were removed and got some additional survey, both aerial drone footage and boots-on-the-ground topo survey. Here are some photos showing what we found. There was a lot more damage than we had initially anticipated. We see side slope failure, near vertical side slopes in some locations. The ditch was starting to meander in some locations. Just kind of go through some of the photos here.
And the amount of sediment in the bottom of the ditch was a lot more than what we had previously thought, too, because we, it's really hard to survey under a tree canopy, so once we got that out, we surveyed that, did some soil borings, and realized there's over two feet of sediment in some areas.
So going through some of the crossings, there are two crossings along the open ditch here, one being that main line crossing that was improved back in 2021. That is now a 16-by-8 box culvert, which is in good condition and has plenty of capacity, drainage coefficient of 5.4. We're not proposing to replace that crossing. We are looking to clean it, though, as there is some sediment that's been deposited in the bottom of it. And then the other crossing is on Spur 1. It is in pretty bad shape, and it is undersized. It's a 48-inch concrete culvert, and the drainage coefficient is around .3, which is about a third of the recommended drainage coefficient.
It's really not safe for any heavy equipment, as you can see in the picture, so.
Yeah, that photo is the Spur 1 crossing.
Kind of scary-looking.
Yeah.
So looking at the proposed crossing condition, like I said, we're not looking to replace the main line crossing, but we are looking to replace that Spur 1 crossing. Because it was shown in historical documents that that crossing was put in post-ditch construction, we are, under the legal definition of a repair, allowed to increase that size to hit that recommended drainage coefficient of one inch per day, so we're proposing a 60-inch RCP culvert to improve that crossing. Just kind of going over the general scope of the project, we updated it post-tree clearing once we got that additional survey, and we found more issues. We kind of changed it from just side slope repair and cleaning to more of a regrading of the ditch, kind of getting that original cross-section back to how it was installed. We're looking at just under 13,000 cubic yards of excavation, and those spoils are proposed to be spread along the buffer and out into the field where necessary. Already talked about the Spur 1 crossing. We're looking to repair that one, and then we do have some ASIs and ASIROs proposed as a part of the project. We are looking to get some grant funding from the SWCD to help get those installed. Here is an example of our plan and profile sheet. You can see the orange area is where we're proposing to spread those spoils that we take out from the ditch along the buffer and into the field. It's going to be kind of hard to see, but the, in the bottom on the profile, the solid black line is the legal grade that we found from soil borings, and then the dashed black line is the sediment depth. I mean, you can kind of see on the left side of the profile, it's pretty deep, around two feet there. Here is a cross-section example of what we're planning to do. You can see just kind of putting that original cross-section back, cleaning out the bottom of the ditch, and then placing those spoils up in the buffer area.
We will be going outside of the buffer for spoil areas, so we may, depending on the outcome of today, may try to get a bid fairly quickly and see if we can get some work done this winter before crops go in, just to avoid some additional crop damage. We'll see, so. See who's available.
Yeah. And then here's just kind of a generic example of one of our ASIs. You can see here is where the burn will be built up with those spoils, and then the ASI will be placed at the edge of the buffer, still within the buffer, and then graded to the ASI to kind of capture that flow that's coming from the fields. And here's a top-down view, just kind of showing where that will be placed and kind of the grading around it that goes into it.
This is one thing that we want to show in more detail, because landowners, and I know some of the Commissioners have heard this, don't always see this, and they don't understand that we will be grading into their fields for these, so.
These are the ASI locations. The orange dots are the ASIs. There are five of them, and then the purple ones, four, six, and seven, will be ASIROs, so they'll have that riprap overflow. There's a large amount of overland flow in those areas, so just kind of extra reinforcement to protect the banks.
And those will hopefully keep the sediment out of the ditch longer term.
And then I can turn it back to you.
Yeah, so if we go into project costs, just looking at the construction costs that have changed, really, engineering and administration costs haven't changed, it's just we're going to be doing more common excavation. So construction costs went from 126 to 229. Our administration, engineering, county administrations, and bonding, those type of things, we have estimated at 48,000. The ASIs, we have at 46,000, so we have an approximate total project cost of 330,000, which is about $100,000 more than what we had previously set with all of the additional work that we have, so. So we do recommend moving forward, because the system So we do recommend, moving forward, because the system is in need of repair. We have had multiple landowner meetings, but we have had very poor participation at those, just to make you aware. We usually have one landowner there. But we would like to get the project going as soon as possible and maybe get some work done this late fall or early spring before planting next year. So, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck and Josh. At this time, we will open up the public comment portion of the hearing. If you would like to make a comment, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Comments from the public are expected to be respectful and civil. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and there's a five-minute time limit. The county administrator will give you a one-minute time when you use your allotted time. In addition, the board may restrict the time allotted to a person whose remarks are repetitive or not relevant to the matter under consideration by the board. Is there anyone wishing to comment at this point? Anyone wishing to comment? Anyone wishing to comment on the drainage repairs that we just heard the report on? Seeing no public comment, I will close the public portion of the meeting and bring it back to the county board. Any questions from the board? Kevin, you have anything to add?
Nope, just disappointed in landowner participation. But I've had a few calls and things like this, but I think everybody understands you can't see what you can't see when the trees are there.
Well, at this time, I'd...
I would move.
Okay, you'll move it?
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the repairs. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thanks to Craig. This concludes our county ditch 89 repairing. Thank you, Chuck and Josh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Report. All right, at this time, planning and zoning just got here, so perfect timing. Probably out in the hallway, I would imagine. All right, planning and zoning are staff. Staff are here to present their action items. This is a public hearing. Public comment will be allowed in just a moment. As previously stated, comments from the public should be civil and respectful. I'd like to ask the planning and zoning staff to introduce themselves and get the first item going.
Yeah, good morning. Scott Salisbury, Property Environmental Resources. First item is PC 20-25. The applicants are Philip and Judith Wilder, and Thomas and Jennifer Bruns. Request is review and approval of an interim use permit for an elder care dwelling. The property is located in the northwest quarter. The northwest quarter is Section 8, Decoria Township. The site has a location address of 18851 Jasmine Road, Nankato. At the meeting, staff presented the report to the planning commission. The applicant was present and commented on the need for the dwelling. There's no public input. The planning commission asked the applicant if the door width and the plans would be suitable for their needs. And the width in the plans were, should be 36 inches, and they revised that. And the planning commission discussed the allowance of daylighting of the floor drains. And following discussion, the planning commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the county board based on the findings and conditions prepared by staff. And the board action is a passage of a resolution based on the recommendation of the planning commission.
All right, thank you, Scott. At this time, we will open up the public comment. If you would like to make a comment on PC 20-25, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to comment? Last time, anyone wishing to comment on PC 20-25, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Hearing none, I'll bring, close the public comment portion of the hearing and bring it back to the county board for action.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Again, we put this policy in place a couple of years ago. I appreciate the people and the families that are using this ordinance that we have to help take care of their elderly parents. I think it's been working out really well, so.
Yeah, it's very positive.
Yep.
Very positive.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. We will move on to planning and zoning 21-25.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. PC 21-25 is a request from Robert Cord's Trust and Lunason LLC. The request is for review and approval of interim use permit up to operate a large solar energy system. The project has a power capacity of up to five megawatts. The project is located in Section 20 of Luray Township. At the planning commission meeting, staff presented the report to the planning commission. The planning commission commented on the need to address the township road not being used by contractors. The applicants were present and gave brief background and some of the details of the project. No one from the public spoke regarding the project. And following discussion, the planning commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation for approval to the county board based on the findings prepared by staff and pending condition number 12 regarding the use of township roads for construction, for construction vehicles to the project site. The board action is a passage of a resolution based on the recommendation of the planning commission.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, I'll open up the public portion of the meeting. If there's anyone in the public that would like to comment on PC 21-25, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Second time, anyone wishing to comment on PC 21-25, please come to the podium. And last time, anyone wishing to comment on PC 21-25, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Seeing no public comment, I will close the public portion of the meeting and bring it back to the county board for action.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? The only thing I would add is I think we got the part with the township road resolved, and there is other avenues to get that. I know we might still have some people using it, but I think just trying to keep an open line of communication.
Absolutely.
Will be helpful to everybody, so. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, we are already up to human services.
Phil's here.
Is he here?
Yeah.
Oh, no audience.
He's in the back.
Oh, there he is, right there. Good morning, Phil. How are you today?
I'm doing good, hanging in there.
I bet you're hard.
Yeah. Hope it's a more than a thread.
Hanging. Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I just have one action item for today in the packet, and then a couple of informational discussion items regarding child protection. The action item, Mr. Chair, is under Public Health, and it's a cannabis substance use and prevention grant from MDH, Minnesota Department of Health. We are charged with focusing on prevention and the misuse of cannabis and other substances. I have some strong, coming up in the chemical health world. You know, a lot of folks struggle with addiction and their drug of choice is cannabis, so it's not just a nothing drug, I'll say that. I know things have changed and that's the way things are, but our job now is to balance that up and often offer brief interventions, access to treatment, and other prevention activities, which really means education. So, one of our public health nurses would use this fund for her time to go out and educate the community regarding possible risks. And so I think it's a really good balancing point. Appreciate the funds of $101,536 for this purpose. The funds start September 1st, '25, and then go through October 31st, '26. So that is my action for today, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Phil. What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Yeah.
Regrettable. Second.
Got a motion and a second, yes. It's very frustrating, because unfortunately, $101,000 is a lot of money. Ain't even gonna be a touch of what we need to deal with this issue that we're gonna have. Unfortunately, law enforcement, your staff, just, I think it's just gonna be an issue, but that wasn't our decision.
And it's a grant. It's a one-year grant, so.
Right, we don't know the future, Commissioner, that's right.
Yeah, so this might go away next year.
Right.
So it's just frustrating that they pass a rule like that, but then they send you money to help deal with it. Out of our hands.
Agreed.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I have, as I mentioned, child protection information and then out-of-home placement data to share today. I think most of the graphs are straightforward, so I certainly respect the fact that the board can interpret these fairly straight, straight up. The, a couple of highlights, I'll just run through on the first slide under child protection. The maltreatment interventions that we have, this is 24 data. You'll see the three types of investigations that can happen. Facility investigations, which are usually not ours. There are some exceptions where we would do that investigation, but usually the state does facility-based investigations. And then the board's heard me talk about this. Family investigations are the more full boat, using Pat's office and a more serious approach because of the seriousness of the incidents. So that is kind of priority number one and the most serious part of the work we do. Not to say the next one, family assessment, is any less important, but it is an approach of coming alongside families, a little bit of a softer approach to try to improve incrementally even the functioning of the household and get parents, you know, kind of balanced in their parenting. Couple of the notes below, we were at 91% getting to see the folks that were identified in child protection. I'd love for that to be 100%, but to be really candid, it's hard to sometimes find the families and the kids. It just is. So it's impossible to have that be 100%. Skipping down bullets, slight increase in the sexual abuse reports from 23 to 24. And then there were more reports screened in overall. We have some pressure to do that, to err on the side of saying, we'll bring it in and give it a harder look rather than a softer look. And so I think that number is a really good indicator of that. The pie chart to the right, percentage of maltreatment victims. The two obvious ones that don't move is neglect at 63% and physical abuse at 24%. So, you know, that makes up more than 85, well, I guess 85% of the incidents that we do investigate and look into. You see some movement. Sarah Johnson is our supervisor, commented on that we had two staff go to other units and two leaving the agency. Not really unusual. It's a hard, hard area, a hard job, yeah. And so I don't know that I would ever blame some churn in that area. So I, it's always hard, though, to find the right person. And we have a position right now that we've filled in child protection. And so I'm really glad we found somebody with some experience to come in and kind of help us, because the numbers are high. This area, more than most, fluctuates. We have waves. It's always been that way. I can't really tell you why, and sometimes you say, well, it's the school year, it's this, that. There's some of that. There's more eyes on kids during the school year. But it just ebbs and flows and we get, we go from just pillar to post as far as numbers. So it's really, that's hard with the staffing issue, it really is. Next slide is the first of the out-of-home placement. Slides, oops. And you'll see, I'm looking at the big pie chart. And the placement challenges are listed to the left. Reasons children enter out-of-home placement. And the first three, and it goes kind of across, so parental drug use, neglect, and then physical abuse, threatened injury, make up 85% of our story. We're right back to our conversation about cannabis is, there's just far and away, no doubt, that it's usually involving chemicals. It just is. And so it's not really an opinion, it's a fact, that there's a lot of problems that come from chemicals still in our community. And then the final slide looks at expenditures, so breaks that down. Foster care being the biggest one, which I'm actually very proud of. I think that's the best option for us since it's a family-based setting. I always want that number to be higher than any other. Now, if you combine the rest of them, it's higher than that, but they are broken down into corrections placements is the next one. And then R placements in group homes and facilities as well. Residential treatment, and then finally, inpatient, which can be, as you all know, very costly. But the, this is a percentage of expenditure, so I mean, it's good that that's not as high as the rest. So it's kind of tipped the way I'd want it to be tipped, towards foster care. The bullets to the right, 52% of children placed into foster care with relatives or kin. That is a key goal for us, to have them again be in a family-based setting, not a facility setting if we can help it. And then to be with family or somebody that they know, really, really important. And so we put an emphasis on that and it shows.
Phil, do we have a lot of foster care families?
Yeah, we do. We've always struggled. I mean, I'm always, like, at that opportunity, you asking me that question, is we're always looking for more. And there's a lot of information. We'll meet with people. You don't have to make a commitment to come talk to us and say, would you ever consider this? So we do have a lot of family-based foster care. And then there's also corporate foster care that are administered through like LSS or something like that. And so between those two, we have a lot of resource in our community. And obviously, being in a region where there's a lot of smaller counties, we have a lot of resources compared to some of the smaller counties. It's just true. But we can always use more, so that's my pitch. And I really appreciate you asking that, because it's an opportunity to talk about the fact that we're always looking for foster families. The foster family can control how many kids they want, what age they want. I mean, it's a wide-open menu, and you can say, I just, I would take on one child and at this age range. Fine, we'll take that for sure. I mean, we'd be happy to work with that. Thank you for that question, yeah. There was a, excuse me, a 10% increase in out-of-home placements overall from 23 to 24. And again, I guess I can't help it, but parental drug use remains a consistent primary reason. There it is again. And then the final pie chart is the exits, when children do leave out-of-home placements. Why do they leave? Reunification with parents and adoption. Those are both considered permanency options, is how we talk about that, the language we have. Either of those, either an adoption or return to the family. Of course, we'd love for children to be back with their primary family, but sometimes that's just not possible. It's not safe. And so the adoption option, I always feel, is one of our bright spots. It's just something we do that's really positive, so. That's what I had for today.
Any questions for Phil? Thank you.
It's good to see you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely.
Good information.
Yep, tell your staff to keep up the good work, Phil. All right, that brings us to item number eight, some administration. Bob?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item are the county board minutes for September 9th.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion and a second for the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries.
Next are the bills for the two weeks indicated.
So moved.
Second motion, move a second. Second mark? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, tab eight in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. We have one action item for the board's consideration today, and I'd ask Human Resource Director Alva Back to come and present this item for the board.
Good morning, Laura.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. So today, I'm here to present a request for approval for a county-wide voluntary furlough program for both the continuation or the rest of year 2025 and then into 2026. As you're well aware, we are facing some current and potential future budget challenges. And the goal of this program is to manage the operational costs while giving employees greater flexibility. Employees who would wish to participate would take time off while keeping their benefits and employment status intact. And then importantly, this participation is entirely voluntary, and we will manage the program to ensure that there's no disruption to those essential county services. As you're aware, we already have this in the Human Services Department. This proposal is to simply expand it to countywide. There are a few changes, just primarily in some of the administrative and process pieces, just to make the flow go a little bit smoother. And we are going to honor or have any of those that have been previously approved with, under that program. They'll be able to continue as they were approved, but we would have, any new requests would come in under this county-wide program. We will be engaging with the unions. We will be engaging with the unions as participation by representative employees is often required or subject to a memorandum of understanding with their bargaining agreement. So, we'll try and get that arranged. From a fiscal perspective, these savings are gonna depend on the number of employees who participate, pay rates, the amount of furlough, that type of stuff. So, at this time, we're unable to predict what that savings would be, but even that modest participation helps reduce those expenditures and contribute to the county's long-term financial stability. So, again, this is just a program that gives us another tool to navigate the budget challenges responsibly while supporting those employees who may value that option of additional time away from work. And with that, the staff recommends that approval of the voluntary program.
All right, thank you, Laura.
I'll move approval.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I appreciate you getting this together so fast, you know? We asked for this like a week ago, I feel like, so really appreciate that.
I think some of the main things that you stated is, number one, it's voluntary.
Yes.
And number two, that the directors of each unit will make sure that it does not affect the workload and the necessary runnings of Blue Earth County. I think that's huge for the citizens to understand that, that, you know, we're not going to affect, you know, what happens. We're trying to eliminate costs the best we can.
Yes, sometimes you have to deny the request because you don't have enough staff.
Right.
All right, other comments, questions? Hearing none, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Well done, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. There's informational items in our human resources area. We have filled a correctional officer in our jail. We also had a change of employment status for a correctional officer from full-time to part-time. And then, we filled another correctional officer, so we're getting a little bit closer to being full-staffed in the jail. I hesitate to even say that because every time we do, it goes the other way. Then, we have filled an Assistant County Attorney, one in the county attorney's office, as well as a licensed center specialist in our finance department. And we had a promotion of a mental health center specialist to a mental health services specialist, part of the reorganization of that position when we had a vacancy. So, really combining a couple of positions there. And we've filled a property and environmental resources part-time position, and we also have initiated recruitment for a property and environmental resources specialist, one. So, that's the list of activity. If board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer anything there.
Any questions on the staffing? Okay.
In your packet, at tab nine is a resolution that's required by Minnesota statute certifying the proposed 2026 property tax levy. Blue Earth County staff began working on the budget in April of this year. Meetings with department heads were held in June, and then we had work sessions with the Board of Commissioners throughout the summer, resulting in a proposed levy of $51,901,870. This proposed levy is an 8.5% increase over the levy that was assessed for 2025. And we'll point out that residential property owners will likely see the county portion of their property taxes increase between 14% and 15% from last year's tax bill due to the shifting values of the various property classifications. Agricultural properties are likely to see a slight decrease in their county property taxes due to the declining values of ag land, while commercial, industrial, and apartment properties are likely to see an increase of between 8% and 9%. The county's tax rate will increase from 36.41% to 39.62%. If approved, this proposed levy increase will be the second-largest annual increase in the last 30 years. We still are seeing increased pressure on wages due to the challenging labor market, service demands that continue to be high, stagnant or declining state and federal funding support, and inflationary impacts on our operational costs, which have all led to this level of levy being requested. At this time, I'm recommending the proposed 2026 property tax levy of $51,901,870 be certified to the Blue Earth County Finance Director.
Thank you, Bob.
I'd be happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions? What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second? Discussion?
Well, I think, I'll go first. We've come down from where we started. When we were first talking about this in work sessions, we've come down quite a bit. And it's still hard. This is probably the hardest vote I'm gonna take since I've been on this board because 14% to 15% of our residential property is tough.
It's tough, real tough.
But, it's gonna be uglier in the next two years, and if we don't do it this year, next year's gonna be even worse. So, I'm proud of what we've done so far, the selective freezing of positions, the moving of employees around, the reclassifications to get jobs combined. I think we've done some really good work so far, and we're gonna have lots more to do coming up.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good points.
On that note, it's gotta be.
Yeah, we spent a lot of time talking about this in work sessions. I don't disagree. The increase for the residential will be tough, but it isn't gonna get any easier. So, whether we can do some more with it before the end of the year, I don't know. I'd sure appreciate the staff and admin with all their things that you mentioned and working through all those processes and trying to make the footprint smaller, trying to balance the budget. And we heard from our bond rating people this morning that if we keep using levy to balance our budget, that could affect our bond rating in the future, and that could be a negative impact on things we have to do in the future. So, I learned that this morning. But, I think we're in a good position to use reserves, and we're, well, you'll probably talk about on the next slide, we're using about $6 million of reserves.
Yeah, that is what the projection is, about a $6 million deficit. And Commissioner O'Connor is correct, we have reduced staffing by about, I think we're up to about 13 FTEs that have been reduced as part of our efforts to kind of control costs. I can tell you, in working with department heads, we have pushed out a lot of capital into future years or removed them entirely, and that makes me a little nervous as an administrator that we're kicking the can down the road. But, you know, folks are really recognizing the current environment and are trying to present to you a budget that makes sense for our organization.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries for the preliminary levy.
Item number 10 in the packet is the 2026 proposed budget. Minnesota Statute 375A.06 requires the county administrator to prepare and submit an annual budget and long-range capital expenditure program to the county board. As I mentioned previously, staff have been working on the proposed budget since April of this year, and it has been reviewed numerous times in work sessions with the county board. The 2026 expenditure budget is considered to be less than in 2025, with most of the decrease the result of the expected completion of the new public works facility, which was budgeted mostly for 2025. Expenditures are anticipated to exceed revenue and draw from reserves is projected in this budget due to the reasons stated earlier. At this time, I'm recommending the approval of a resolution regarding the 2026 proposed budget, which projects expenditures at $135,608,691. I would also just like to take a moment to point out that the public hearing to discuss the budget will be held on December 2nd, 2025, at 6:00 PM here in the historic courthouse.
All right, thank you, Bob. What are the wishes of the board?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second on the preliminary budget? Any discussion? Kind of same comments that were all made on the levy. A lot of hard work went into getting us to where we're at today. Appreciate all the efforts on the admin team and the employees of Blue Earth County. This is challenging for them at times, too, so.
I think it's important to notice that the next two years, with the state and federal issues that are happening, we're gonna get hit even harder. So, that's, that's, this is high, but hopefully, the state and federal elected officials can straighten up some issues and it won't affect local government as much.
All right, other comments? Hearing none, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries for the '26 preliminary budget. And it looks like that brings me to the end of our agenda. Bob, is there anything else?
That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
All right, at this point, we will do some committee reports. Kevin, I'm gonna start with you today.
All right, since our September 9th board meeting, attended the work session after that. September 10th through 13th, I was at the AMC Fall Legislative Policy Section, Session. 18th, we had a rural caucus from NACO, as well as township meeting that evening. September 19th, we had a JD-15 landowner meeting, as well as a GABURBA policy committee meeting. And then, 22nd yesterday, we had renewable Minnesota Energy Board meeting yesterday. That completes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Eddie?
All righty. I also attended the work session on the 9th, and I went to a retirement party of someone I hired almost 40 years ago, or maybe 40 years ago. AMC Policy Committee from the 10th to the 12th. And on the 15th, I had my NACO FICA meeting, of which I'm now a vice chair, and Blue Earth County Library Board. 16th to the 18th, I went to the Transportation Alliance, my first time attending that. It was well-attended, I think, and it had some value, lots of value, actually. And that's the end of my report.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Vance?
All right, well, the work session on the 9th, I thought was a very good work session. It had some good information given to us. I also attended the AMC Fall Policy Conference, and I also attended the Transportation Alliance fly-in, where we talked with, personally with Senator Klobuchar, Senator Smith, and Congressman Finster. I think all those meetings went very well, and they understood the situation wherein with our, with what's going on here in Blue Earth County. On the 19th, I had an MRCI leadership training that was held at the Hubbard Building. And yesterday, I attended a Transportation Alliance Legislative Zoom and a Parks Board meeting in the afternoon, and that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mark?
Okay, of course, on the 9th of September, we had the work session, and September 17th, had the remote MICA board meeting. And then, the also evening, had the Minnesota Valley Council of Government meeting, the last one that IBP had. And September 18th, we did have the Association of Township Officers meeting. And then, the 19th, we had our, actually, a nice, at the, our All Seasons Arena, we had the, I wanna call it a grand reopening again. Haven't been there yet, with your skates or without your skates, so, yeah, it's really quite a renovation, really great job. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. I also was at the county board work session, then I had some discussion with a couple of engineers with the privatization of county ditches and the challenges we will have as road authorities come into them. I had my MVAC meeting, which everything's going along very well there. Mark mentioned the MICA board meeting call-in last month. Will be in-person again next month. Blue Earth County Association of Townships, a little lighter crowd this month, but they had a, had a good presentation and it was about an hour meeting. And a few things on Highway 14 and some road issues out in the rural area for me for this month. So, that brings me to the end of my report. Anything else for the good of the order? entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.